Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would please stand and join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on January 11th. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gustaf. We have a motion and a second, so we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. And I think, Mr. Hinton, you wanted to make an announcement before we start.
There was a item that was advertised in the newspaper for, it was ordinance 2903, for the abandonment of the Kelly Park Crossing Development of Regional Impact, the DRI. Staff is withdrawing that. There's one development that's going to be going through a portion of their own development. They're going to withdraw from the DRI themselves, and after there's a portion of the property on the southwest side of 429 Kelly Park that's going for auction on March 22nd, and so we are going to wait until after that auction is done and any legalities that are done in association with that before we go through the abandonment of the rest of the DRI. But just kind of give you a heads up, that is going to be coming. And the reason that we're doing this is that the Development of Regional Impact had a lot of different constraints and different requirements that basically have never, ever been fulfilled, other than the one that the city had to do, which was getting the form-based code for the Kelly Park Interchange done, which we obviously did, and it's in our land development code, and that is the main driver of the developments that are up there anyway. So the DRI really isn't even needed. So we've already discussed this with just about all the property owners, but that'll be coming mid this year, just to give you a heads up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll have a public comment period for any general comments that anyone wishes to make. If you're here for a particular item on the agenda, there will be a public hearing for that item, and it would probably be best to sew your comments for that. But if you, anyone wants to make any comments or general comments now, please come up, give us your name and address, and make the comments. And seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. Our first item is ordinance number 3912, Amendment to Land Development Code, definition of tobacco shop, and we have a presentation by the city attorney.
Good evening, members of the commission. Ordinance 2912 is being presented before you today is the culmination of a settlement that was conducted between the city and the proprietors of Narum Global. If you recall, this was an item that came before you, probably late last summer, for a special exception use to operate a tobacco shop in the MU district, MUD zoning district. If we recall during that commission meeting, I think the vote was just 3-2. It was very contentious as to what necessarily was the definition, what constituted a tobacco product, a tobacco-related product. The matter, well, the planning commission voted to deny this, sorry, the planning commission voted to approve the special exception with the condition that tobacco substitute products were not a permitted sale within the space. The owner of the shop appealed to the city council. City council, by a vote of 3-2, upheld the planning commission's decision. The owners then filed for a, under the Florida Land Use Alternative Dispute Act, a further challenge to the actions of the city. Under the act, the first step is a mediation that's conducted between the parties in order to see if a resolution can be made. Parties mediated and actually came to a settlement, and the settlement was that the city was going to present an amendment to the land development code to correct the definitions. Now, the settlement is that it's going to be presented, and the zoning has to take its, the legal measures to get approved. The parties did not contract for the amendment, for the amendment to the code. The, all the amendment, all the agreement said was that the city was going to present an amendment, and that's what's here before you today. The definition has been changed of tobacco shop to bring it in line with the state statutory definitions for tobacco, tobacco products, and the tobacco and what are called nicotine dispensing devices that are regulated by the state. So now there is no ambiguity in our code. These are the products that fall under the tobacco shop. These definitions are going to be consistent with the state, so we won't run afoul of any preemption issues. And we believe that in the end, this will honor the spirit of the settlement and also clarify for future uses. As was presented to the council, is then the council's prerogative, if they wish to change the zoning code, to restrict or further place where these types of uses could go. That's for the city council to decide whether we want to change them or not put them in certain areas. But for now, that is going to be the definition of tobacco shop, and the definitions are in line with the state statute, and it will proceed forward. So this is the, the ordinance is being presented to the planning commission for your consideration and for your recommendation to the city council that the ordinance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Any questions? I am here to answer.
I do. What is the net effect on the 60 East Fifth Street project of this decision? I.e., we say, yeah, we want to change it. What does effect does that have on that particular incident?
The one that was previously approved. So no, they would, they would, the settlement as part of it would be that the special exception would then be consistent with the, with the new...
It would grant the special exception?
Well, no, the special exception is granted. What you're going to have is it's approved, now it's going to fall into the new definitions that, I believe we did agree that it would, it would then be, the approval would, would take effect under the new, under the new code, and they would be able to sell both tobacco products, tobacco, tobacco products, and then the, what is defined under the statute and the code as the nicotine dispensing devices. These would be vaping products.
So we'll have no net effect on that particularly?
No, it would, no, there wouldn't be any changes.
I've got a real quick correction. The, it was listed as ordinance 2912. It's actually 2904.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Does anyone in the audience wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this amendment to the LDC and forward the ordinance number, is it 2904, Jim?
2904.
2904 to city council for adoption.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment. Clarcona Road property from County Rural to City Industrial. Owner is ENH Clarcona. Applicant is Andrew Engelmann, care of David Schmidt. Location is east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarcona Road, and we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Planner One with the city's planning division. The subject property is located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarcona Road. The applicant is requesting a small-scale future land use amendment to change the future land use designation from County Rural to City Industrial. The application is being processed simultaneously to an application to rezone the subject property from County A1 to IL Light Industrial. DRC recommends approval, and staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, my move is that we find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed future land use amendment from County Rural to Industrial for the property owned by ENH Clarcona LLC, located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarcona Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorendo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gustaf. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. And our next item for that same property is a proposed change of zoning to, from County A1 to City IL, and we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Planner One with the city's planning division. This is the same subject property located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarcona Road. The property was annexed into the city on December 15th, 2021 via ordinance number 2890. The request is to rezone a 1.34 acre parcel of land from County A1 Citrus Rural District to IL Light Industrial. The proposed development is an industrial warehouse. DRC recommends approval, and staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you very much. And any questions of the applicant? Did you wish to make a presentation?
No presentation. Dave Schmidt, Dave Schmidt Engineering, 12301 Lake Kinderhill Road, Orlando, Florida. We agree with staff's recommendation and want to thank them for their diligent work with us on not only this project, but several others. Thank you. And we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, very good. Any questions of the applicant? Nope. Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. To find the proposed endorsement consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of surrounding areas, recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from County A1 to Light Industrial IL for the property owned by ENH Clarcona, located on the east of Coral Road and west of Clarcona Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gustaf. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a variance to allow retaining walls to exceed the maximum of six feet in height in some areas for the Apopka City Center North Project, Wind Dixie. The owner is CPPB LLC, petitioner is CPPB LLC, location is east of McGee Avenue, south of Monroe Avenue, and north of East Main Street. This is a quasi-judicial item, so I'll ask if anyone in the audience requests affected party status? And seeing none, I'll ask commissioners if anyone has, had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sure.
And hearing none, we'll proceed with a staff presentation.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Planner One with the city's planning division. The request is to approve a variance of the Apopka Code ordinances, Part III Land Development Code, Section 511, retaining walls, to allow retaining walls to exceed six feet in height. The property is approximately seven acres, located north of East Main Street and east of South McGee Avenue. The applicant is proposing a Wind Dixie on the site. The elevations are shown here. DRC recommends approval, subject to modification and condition that any walls over six feet must be poured in place. Segmented block walls less than six feet may be used with tieback as approved by the city engineer. Richard Earp, the city engineer, is available for technical questions. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Yeah, how, how high is the wall going to be?
I'm going to defer to the city engineer.
Good afternoon. Richard Earp, city engineer, and I'll defer to the applicant. We went back and forth a few times. I don't remember what the, the final height of the wall was. It wasn't a lot over six feet, but it was some.
I can point out a couple of the main spots that, that I had a concern with, and the favor addressed it. And then the applicant definitely. Yeah, there we go. One of the things that, when we establish the six-foot limit is that anything that's in, in main public view, that was the main concern. So there's a requirement of five foot in front of that six foot in order to be able to put landscaping, so that the bushes can basically grow up three, four, or five feet, and you only see like a little bit of, of a wall. So basically, you aren't seeing wall upon wall upon wall upon wall. The majority of all these walls up to about here and all along up to about here, and then even some of these smaller ones here are all less than six feet. The one that's on the, there's, the main one that I had a concern with was this one here. It is a tiered wall. That does go up to about eight feet. It does face internal, so this is an outlot, so when they put in a building here or parking, they can actually build, bring the building right up there. You might not even see it. So that wasn't, that was my main worry, was that one that was exposed, but obviously, everybody's driving westbound. The eastbound is already way over here, so they would hardly see it anyway. The other area is back behind the building, and that one, I believe, gets up to about 14, 15 feet. Is that correct? So it's, it's, like I said, it's behind the building, and it is a drop down from the road, and obviously, they do have rails on top of those walls. So anybody that sees that, they're going to be behind the building, and it's not in the normal public view of a street or a house or something like that. So that's, we're just trying to avoid that. You know, a lot of people don't necessarily like walls. Other people don't care. But again, that's why we, we did the six-foot limitation, and that's why they're in for their variance, for the justification is that, you know, that there's a large drop in the elevation from Monroe down to 436. So they did do the tiers in, in this location here, and that's the main tier location that, that was, that Allison had described on the slide there. So this is, this is where I get mixed up, which, which, which way is which. But basically, you can see a, one tier here and then another tier on top of that, and then they will have an area for landscaping to put in plants. They obviously can't show that, because then you wouldn't see the wall.
Do you have the view from Monroe, looking north?
You, well, looking south from, from Monroe, you wouldn't even see the wall, because it's, 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 it's down below. So the only thing you'll see is the top part of the building itself.
Okay.
And that's it. Yeah, that was, that was one of the main concerns. That's where it drops down. They dig down and then get the plane out for the, the, the flooring area for the Wind Dixie itself.
And what's west of the property?
Which what?
What's west of the property?
Right now, let me go back to this. This is the open field area for the church that's right over here off of McGee.
Am I reading that wrong? I'm sorry. Then I guess I would say east and...
Monroe's here. McGee is over here. This is, this is the approximate location where the incubator used to be, and then this is the church property. The church actually owns this too, but right now it's just vacant.
I'm sorry. I meant, I meant the east side of the property.
East side, there's nothing over there right now. There's a couple by the name of Argawal that owns two lots next to this, and again, this is, looking this way, they won't see the wall, because the wall is, it's a drop coming down into the site.
That was my concern.
Yep, same here.
Thank you. So Jim, this is more of a, it's based on an elevation change than anything else.
Yes.
So from the degraded level of the parking lot, it's going to be six foot across the back, but on the backside, it would be eight or 12 feet or whatever.
Correct, back in, back up here. Otherwise, they'd have to, they'd have to fill it somehow or cut it down somewhere and do a staggered wall. I mean, if, if, if they did three walls here instead of just two walls, they'd basically take up about 15, 20 feet of the property from the property line coming in. And of course, that affects the building area that the outlot could actually utilize.
No, I understand. It's, my point is, it's not like from the ground level, it's got an eight or 12-foot wall. It's going to look the same inside the property, it's just the gradient coming up the backside.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So how do, so the hardship, how we define the hardship with this?
It's the grade of the property going from the back to the front.
Okay.
Come on. Oh, well, yeah, this is...
Okay, and if you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is John Strzalke from the ownership CPPB, 20900 Northeast 30th Avenue, Suite 307, Aventura, Florida. So a little bit background on the site, you know, we've been through three DRC hearings and reviews on the site, and I believe we're basically at the, at the point of approvals. This is basically a 53,000 square foot grocery-anchored shopping center, 47,000 square foot grocer. And as you probably are aware, if you've seen the site, there's a very substantial drop-off from the northwest corner to the southeast corner. We're talking an elevation change of about 37 feet, so 117 feet, which is the bottom one here?
Top one, top with the star.
Oh, there you go. So yeah, about 117 feet here, and then there's about 80, 80 feet right here. So there's a pretty substantial change there. So for us to meet ADA requirements and slope requirements required by basically modern retail, we really need to raise the site. And one thing I want to point out, specifically on the rear, there is actually a six-foot screen wall that's part of our plans as well, that's not noted. And additionally, we did acknowledge that, you know, we will use cast-in-place for anything over six feet. I think we're actually going to probably use cast-in-place throughout. We did provide staff a fully engineered cross-section plans that really leave no doubt for the contractor that's going to build this. So we also did provide cross-sections for the fencing that we're using, we're planning on using, I believe, about five-foot, what they call a Lubegard fencing. It's attractive black fencing, which is, you know, cohesive with kind of a Class A retail project. Really, at the end of the day, this is something that, you know, is a great addition to the city center project that's going on, on the south side as well of the property. And, you know, I think it creates a, a pretty safe and cohesive design. If there's any specific questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to answer those.
So at the end of the day, you have the parking, and you have the grocery store. So when folks park, are they kind of walking uphill to the grocery store?
So from, from Monroe, it's basically going to be a slight downhill decline there?
From Monroe, yeah.
Yeah, because we're basically lowering the site essentially. But on, from, coming up from Main Street or 441, there is going to be a hill up there, but that's going to be within compliance of slope standards. What we were trying to do was in the main parking area, the whole main, basically the whole main parking area, we're trying to be a below, we're, I think we're at about 2% grade, so, or less. So that's kind of the goal of that. Basically, it contains carts, so carts don't roll away. Obviously, meets and/or exceeds ADA requirements today. So the goal was to really make that site as safe as possible. And unfortunately, there's some pretty drastic elevations that are somewhat unusual for development in Florida typically.
I ask that question because over at Hunts Club, we're, I don't know, this is not, this is just my experience. Over in Hunts Club, there's Publix over there, and some other stores, whatever. There's a Jersey Mike's over there, but the parking lot is smoked. And, you know, every time I go over there, I need motorized assistance.
Yep.
Just kidding. But it's just going up, it's so steep. Why do they do this?
Yeah.
I hope this is not going to be like that.
Yeah, so it's funny, our, our first version of the plans actually had a little bit, like, probably 0.5 degree of slope additional, which we still would have required somewhat of a variance here, but not to the extent that we're presenting here. But it was basically kind of rejected by our ADA consultant, and then also Wind Dixie was like, this is at the limit, but we don't want to be there. And so, yeah, basically, it's containing carts and obviously having accessibility that's good for everybody. So, you know, at the end of the day, the, the added cost is, is, is there, and that's kind of our hardship. But, you know, we, we really want to push this project forward, and we're kind of at the one-yard line with the construction approvals here.
So when I read this?
Yes.
And I read the ADA requirements must be, excuse me, added to the site, retain, retaining walls, six feet in some areas of the site. And I thought to myself, okay, so there are ways to avoid that area for people who have, you know, some ADA complications in their lives.
Yep.
Because a grocery store, and I'm thinking a runaway wheelchair. So I just, I need the assurances that if I or anyone else that needs that elevation, if you will, will have ample opportunities to have multiple ingress egress.
Absolutely, yes. So Monroe, we, we did add some ingress. That was recommended by staff, so there is, you know, striped areas here. Obviously, we don't have a ton of detail on this particular site plan. And then coming from, from McGee, there's obviously everything on, there's going to be sidewalks there. That's, the, the city center owner has retained those two parcels there, and that's obviously going to be retail development, and those are in process. So that's all part of our grading plan, and so, yeah, there's going to be basically three points of ingress or more for people that have ADA issues. We own a number of shopping centers, grocery-anchored shopping centers, and things that were developed in the 70s and the 80s, and those are all being brought to compliance. And so we are very well attuned and, you know, have a lot of knowledge about bringing those to ADA compliance currently, so...
We feel better that you have a little experience with it.
Exactly, exactly.
By the way, this, the Wind Dixie, if you've ever seen a Wind Dixie like this, I'd be surprised, because this is a new prototype that we're getting in our downtown. It took Orlando about 30, 35 years to get a grocery store back in their downtown, and Wind Dixie's nice enough to come in.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the presentations and open it up to the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the variance.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorendo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gustaf. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chair, this is with the caveat that the, anything over six feet has to be poured in place, as presented.
Okay.
Well, that's one of the options.
Correct, yeah, that's what the staff is recommending.
She made a motion for the first one, so he'd have to make a motion for the second one.
Yeah, I thought it was like a two-step process.
No, I, it is, it is a two-step process, but we can do it in one vote.
Right.
But the, the, I think the staff's recommendation was to approve the variance, subject to the modification and/or the condition, that any walls over six feet must be poured in place. I don't, is that, was that your motion?
That was my motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorendo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gustaf. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously.
Thanks.
Okay, our next item is a variance to allow a maximum building for property-zoned CC, Community Commercial, district of 75 feet in lieu of 35 feet. The owner is HC8 Development, HCH Development LLC. The applicant is B. Climbing Eek, care of Steve Carnes. Location is the northeast corner of the intersection of Clarcona Road and State Road 414, and we have a staff presentation.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is our variance request in reference to a property located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Clarcona Road and State Road 414. The property is approximately seven acres. Area of the property shows the north to have single-family residences, the eastern parcel to include agricultural facilities, and the southern and western adjacent parcels to be vacant. Please note that there is a large carts feature on the property on the south corner. The current future land use designation... The current future land use designation of the property is commercial, and it is within the CC Community Commercial zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance from Land Development Code Section 3.4, .4C, maximum building height, to allow a maximum allowable height of 75 feet in the CC zoning district, in lieu of the required 35 feet, 35-foot maximum to allow for a truck climbing, oh, I'm sorry, for a rock climbing facility. The variance process includes two step. The first step is that the Planning Commission makes an initial determination of the section noted in your staff report, as outlined there. And then the second step is to make a positive finding that applicant demonstrates there's competent substantial evidence in the record on each of the nine items as listed in the staff report as well. Based on the character of the area and the elevation of State Road 414, the applicant asserts that a rock climbing facility as shown in the proposed renderings will not be as, as obtrusive from the perspective while traveling on 414. Minimal if any impact from the height will occur to any other adjacent properties, given the tallest part of the building will be nearest State Road 414. Development Review Committee has no objection to the applicant's request, and per the Land Development Code Section, the Planning Commission decision shall be one of the following. Approve the variance, approval of the variance subject to modification or condition or denial of the variance. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, and one thing I should have done upfront is to advise that this is a quasi-judicial item. And if anyone requests effective party status for this item, if you would let us know. And seeing none, I would again ask the commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communication on this item.
No.
Nope. Okay, then any questions of staff?
Let's go over the hardship again. Why is there, I don't understand the hardship. I mean, I understand why they want to do it, but to me, it's not a hardship.
The applicant has an explanation for their hardships, so I'll invite them to go ahead and answer that question.
Okay, if, if the applicant, if you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Stephen Carnes, address 633 Gainesway, Winter Park, Florida, 32789.
Stephen, go ahead and bring the mic up.
I'm a little taller than Jean. Stephen Carnes, 633 Gainesway, Winter Park, Florida, 32789.
Okay, and your presentation or your comments?
Uh, yeah, regarding the hardship, to be able to host regional, national, and international events in rock climbing for two of the three climbing disciplines, which would be sport and speed, the height requirement is necessary. Otherwise, the project would not be viable. Speed climbing is 15 meters, which is 49 feet, and you have to have a little height above what the top hold is as well. Other climbing gyms in the area, you've got Project Rock down in Oakland, Florida, which is 60 feet. You've got Stone Summit in Atlanta, which is 60 feet. And Project Rock is actually currently under construction up in Easyly, South Carolina, with a facility that's going to have 85-foot walls. So that's the reason that we would be asking for the, for the variance, because otherwise, the project just would not be a viable project.
No, I understand what you want to do, I just don't understand why you call it a hardship. To me, it doesn't fit the definition of a hardship. To me, it's more like a special exception, wouldn't you say, Mr.?
Um, well, it's a variance because it's a, it's a measurable type of thing. It goes from 35 to, to 75 feet. And one of the things I need to point out real quick is the, the, the main building itself that's closest to the agricultural property on the north side actually is 35 feet. And they, if you were to utilize our step-back requirements for, say, our Kelly Park interchange, for anything over three stories has to be stepped back 10 feet, and then every 10, every story you have to step back. So actually, this, because of the distance involved from the north property line to where the 75-foot part is, actually, you could go up to 85 feet if you utilize that scenario. So the hardship is, it's primarily, you can't be, this type of use can't be competitive with any other type of, any type of other location unless you have that extra feet that's, that's built into it. And the way they designed their building was to minimize the major impact to any other properties other than the 420 or 414. So that's, that's kind of it in the summary.
I just have a problem with that, I don't, what, they want to double it, you know, they could still say it's a hardship, but I wonder, what, rock climbing, to double it to 150 feet? You can say, what stops them? I don't understand, there's no limit to this.
Well, it is, it's 75 feet.
I know, because they're asking for 75.
That's the limit.
They came in and asked for 100, you know, they could still say it's a hardship.
They, they could, but they didn't.
Right, exactly.
It, it, it is 75 feet, and they did try to minimize the amount of effect on the properties to the north because of that, and actually, for the road, roadway itself.
Well, how, how big is this rock you're talking about, that they're climbing? Because I mean, the area looks, how many square footages is that, is that building?
Proposing 40.
Just, just where the 75 feet is.
Oh, the 75, that would be 10,000 square feet.
10,000, how, how big is the rock?
Looking at the overall facility of 40,000.
Right, well, how big is the rock? I mean, is it just going to, I don't, is it just a small part of it in the center?
How big is what?
The rock, they're climbing, they're climbing the rock, right?
No.
No, it's walls, simulated walls.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we'll have probably roughly around 30,000 square feet with, with climbing walls. The, the other areas will be bouldering, and there'll be some shorter sport climbing.
This, this will put our camp weebow wall, to shame if you've been out to camp weebow with the climbing wall that, that we used to have out there, or actually, we still have it.
It's still there, yeah.
Yeah.
A que, I didn't notice a staff recommendation in the packet. Is there a staff recommendation on this item?
We have no objection to the request. We don't really have, we don't really recommend on variances.
Right.
We just don't have any objections.
Okay. Okay, other questions of either the applicant or staff?
I have a question for staff. Okay, what is the definition of hardship? And this comes up every time we have a variance about whether it's a hardship or not. Well, what is the definition of that? That seems like a very vague and gray area that could.
It, it can be.
The hardship to him is considerably more than the agriculture property next door. And so, how do we delineate that? Where, where's the line drawn? What is a hardship? What is the definition? Do we have a code definition? Does the city have a definition? What is the definition of hardship?
I don't think we've outlined it in the code. I think what we've judged it on is that something that is peculiar to the property. One of the things about this property in particular is that this is one of, if you can look, north and east and west of the properties are all ag. And, you know, recreational indoor facilities are outright permitted. They're permitted by right in a CC commercial district. And this would be an indoor commercial, except for the height issue. And there's also a big carst feature right on the southeast corner there.
That's kind of self-limiting in terms of what, you can't use the whole property for what you may want to, want to be able to use it for. But Jean's right, there's not an, an exact definition because every variance that comes through is a little bit different. So if you granted an approval for this, does not mean that the next one that comes through, you'd have to, you, you'd have to grant the, the same type of approval. If they had the exact same circumstances, where it, it's a, it's a new type of business coming in, they've made considerations for the neighbors, for the, you know, the, the height and the distance and the elevation variances, or for, for that, and the location is next to the 414, that's also another hard thing in order to develop in the area. There's a bikeway right across, you know, right, right in front. I mean, all these things can be part of why it's a particular or peculiar type of situation. And they're all, they're all things that can be taken into consideration.
DRC members did consider the characteristic of the area in particular, and, and found this to be, you know, other than, found this to be a particularly ideal site for something like a rock climbing facility.
Well, since we don't have a clear definition of hardship, what is the state of Florida's definition of hardship?
Now, this, this is not a state matter. There, while the definite, while the hardship is not defined, what the code requires you to find in order to determine whether or not a variance is to be granted is under the first section, which is, "There are practical difficulties in carrying out the strict letter of the relevant requirements of the LDC in that the requested variance relates to a hardship due to characteristics of the land and not solely the needs of the land owner." So you have to make a determination, you have to examine what is the characteristics of the land and the intended use of the land by the owner, and are there certain physical characteristics to the land that cause a hardship upon the owner to try to meet the letter of the law, and hence why, why a variance is requested. So the owner has the onus to present to the, to the commission that this is the hardship that is caused by the characteristics of the land, which makes it impossible for me to develop to the letter of the law, which in this case would be a 35-foot building height.
So that's considered, the, the building restrictions on the property is considered the character of the land?
Or the, the nature of the, of the land. It's, I, I'm, that's on, that's on the property owner to make that, to make that case and present with competent substantial evidence.
The nature of the land, are you talking about the grading of the land, or the, the?
The grading, the surrounding uses, everything.
Does that encompass also the code that applies to that land, or the, the land use that applies to that land? Is that considered a character of the land?
No, what you are, what you are to consider is, the code requi, the code has certain requirements. In this case, the issue that they're looking for a variance with, from, is the building height. So then you would have to examine, are there physical characteristics to the land that make it impossible for this property owner to, to perform his use subject to the requirements and the restrictions of the code? So in this case, are there physical requirements to the land that make it that he can, that in order for him to be able to use the land, he requires 75 feet instead of 35 feet? And that's what the property owner has to present to you for you to consider.
You know, this is really, it, it's unusual that this comes under the variance because it's not so much the land. Any place he puts it, he's going to need 75 feet. So it, it's, it's not really consistent with the, the variance should work.
Yeah, anybody wants a taller building can just say, I can't run my business unless I have a taller building. And then their height restrictions don't mean anything.
On the other hand, and I, I appreciate an education if there's one to be had, but I, when I was looking at the packet and I, I see that lovely little humongous sinkhole hardship feature, I went, oh-oh. And that's why, I'm guessing that's why you're trying to get away from it. You can't obviously build on a sinkhole.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the sinkhole and the height, you know, it's, if you were to, if you were to take any other type of building or use, you don't have to necessarily look at it as a climbing facility. Look at the property that you can't use at all, and you're adding it on top of the building.
Well, now, that's, I try to put my mind in, what would I do? Because I looked at that and I thought, right, how far away do you have to be? All right, that puts you up there, and that puts you up there, so you're all the way up to the back of the property.
Yep. I always look at the surrounding area and the circumstances of the property and the use itself, too. That's why, you know, I mentioned that.
Well, that's exactly what I, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to, to get my head wrapped around this. And, okay, so the, the hardship thing is kind of a, and, and again, I may be oversimplifying, but it's almost an impossibility unless you said, well, my property is, you know, it's got a hump in the middle of it that's 35 feet, and that's why I'm over. So it's the dirt's fault, the piece of property I bought. And that's, that's kind of, that's going to be a circumstance that'll never happen with a variance. When somebody wants to build their pool deck more than, closer than 10 feet to their property line, what do they say? Well, my property's too narrow, that's, you know, so I, I don't, I really don't have a grasp on that. It's too much, it, it's, it seems vague. I think probably more to the point would be, you know, our job as a board is to look at it and say, okay, he's asking for a variance here, and what's the effect of that variance going to be? It doesn't set a precedent, no variance ever sets a precedent.
Correct.
So what's the effect of that variance going to be on the property, north, southeast, and west?
Yep.
And, and make the decision based on that. All this, well, a hardship of the property, well, if that's the case, don't ever bring a variance in front of us unless they've got a sinkhole in the middle of their property, like she said, because the land, if it's the character of the land, has to define the hardship, that's impossibility. I don't see where that, I'd like to know an example where the land actually caused the hardship. The hardship is caused by the rules, regulations, the surrounding property, or what the person want to use their property for. So it just, it frustrates me that we always say, well, okay, what's the hardship? Because there's no, there's nothing about the land that causes a hardship. No, the hardship is, he wants to build something reasonable and say, it doesn't have any effect on the people around us, and the only place you'll see it is the 414 or whatever. Okay, well, then that's a decision that we need to make, just based on that information alone, and not have to sit down and dwell down and go, well, we have to find and pinpoint a hardship. The hardship is, he owns a piece of property, wants to build a building, and he can. That's a hardship, simple enough.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to convey.
Maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but it's just.
No, that's, that's what I was trying to convey.
Our job is just simply to look at it and go, does it make sense? Does it hurt anybody next door? The example I used, with somebody building their pool deck closer than 10 feet to their property line, do the neighbors care? No, was there a fence in between, and nobody cares? Fine, there's your variance. Well, that, the same situation, is there anybody, did somebody come here and say that, no, we don't want the big 75-foot building here, there's no houses next to it? So I just don't see it, I don't.
It, it really doesn't fit nicely and neatly into the variance ordinance. Probably a business that, that we would like, that would be good for the area. It's, so maybe we have to use judgment in that area.
Yeah, staff will have to look at this, along with the city attorney, to see. I agree, because we've had this discussion before regarding hardship and, you know, dealing with the land. We might have to retool some of this thought process on that.
I see. Okay, any other questions of applicant or staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gustler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lurendo, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a problem with the height restriction. How can you enforce a height restriction if somebody can come in there and say, I want a building that's higher than this because that's my business? It really means, the height restriction means nothing now. That's the problem I have. No, we're not setting a precedent. Oh, I know that, but. Well, height restriction is, if I have a one-story house and, and three doors are 30 feet away, somebody wants to build a 10-story building, yeah, I got a huge problem with that. And that, that's, I think that's the point of the height restriction, more than anything else. I understand, I understand, it doesn't, doesn't cause anybody problems, and no neighbor's problem, but still, it just, it just voids our height restriction. Because anybody, anybody can come in there.
It doesn't void it.
I mean, in a sense, in a practical, I mean, in a practical sense, they can come in and say, my neighbors aren't bothered by this, I, I want to build 45 feet, I want to build 50 feet.
But it would still be 70.
That's up to us to make that decision based on the location, and does it affect people? And, and if there was 10 people coming here and go, I don't want a big building, then, okay, that's a different thing, but I don't, it doesn't set the precedent. In other words, because, you know, applicant A was allowed to do that, applicant B can come in, I want to do the same thing as them, the answer is no. So, you know, not based on that. I understand that, no, I understand.
We're looking for the, you know, the neighbors. We got a highway and a sinkhole.
It's frustrating because.
Fish, I don't know.
It's a, we want a reasonable application of that, that rule, and it, it's, it's a blanket rule, okay? And there's a situation to where that, okay, well, we can maybe make an exception this time. Well, it doesn't mean that we make an exception every time, and it doesn't give anybody else carte blanche to build whatever they want.
Right.
So I think that's more, you know, the goal of what we're supposed to be doing is look at it and go, in this circumstance, yeah, that rule, we can let that slide a little bit, so.
And that's kind of where I was going, because I thought, we've got the highway here, we have the sinkhole here, and then if I remember right, I don't always have long-term memory, but when I read the packet, going up the other way.
Correct.
It's a.
The grade goes that way.
It's graded.
Correct, but that has nothing to do with hardship. We just need a better definition of hardship so we can. I agree.
Probably, I think that, I think that's right.
Which we'll work on.
Yeah, but we are where we are.
You're going to have the attorney pick that?
I just can't do it right this minute.
No, I realize that, but we're, we're coming back next month.
It'll probably take a little longer than that.
We're going to keep coming back.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we, I think everybody knows how everybody feels. Unless there's further discussion, I think it's time to vote. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No. No.
So, that carries four to one.
Four to one, correct.
All right.
Thank you. I know this is tough, we'll, we'll get this straightened out, too.
Please do.
It does need some work, I think. Okay, our next item is a special exception to allow a place of worship in the residential single-family district large lot, RSF-1B zoning district for property located at fifty, fifteen sixty-seven Plymouth Sorento Road. The owner is Director's Fellowship Eek, the applicant is Peter A. Brunton, Director's Fellowship Eek. The location is fifteen sixty-seven Plymouth Sorento Road. And this, too, is a quasi-judicial item, so I would ask if anyone requests affected party status on this item. And seeing none, I would ask commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communication on this item.
No.
Okay, and seeing none, we will go proceed with the staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner Two with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a special exception for a place of worship at fifteen sixty-seven Plymouth Sorento Road. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located east of Plymouth Sorento Road and south of Shopkey Road. Single-family homes and agricultural properties are within the vicinity.
Excuse me a minute.
Single-family homes and agricultural properties are within the vicinity. The property is currently zoned RSF-1B residential single-family district large lot, which requires a special exception for a place of worship. The concept plan details a place of worship comprised of twenty-two thousand five hundred seventy-five square feet. The applicant has also provided ancillary uses, which are described in the staff report and concept plan. Future development of buildings will require a development plan review. The applicant has provided perimeter, vehicular, and foundation landscaping in the concept plan as well, and such landscaping includes live oaks, winged elms, and crape myrtles. The development review, review committee recommends approval of the special exception, and the recommended motion for this evening is to approve a special exception to allow a place of worship in the residential single-family large lot district, RSF-1B zoning district, for property located at fifteen sixty-seven Plymouth Sorento Road. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant? Okay, then we'll close the presentation, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special exception to allow a place of worship in the residential single-family lot, large lot district, RSF-1B zoning district for pro- property located at fifteen sixty-seven Plymouth Sorento Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lorindo, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
No.
Then we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our na- uh, next item is a major development plan, Oak View. Owner is Kent A. Greer and Annie M. Greer. Applicant is Hanover Land Company, Ben Snyder. Location is south of West Kelly Park Road and east of Round Lake Road, and we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a major development plan for a one hundred thirteen single-family lot subdivision known as Oak View. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow, comprised of an estimated thirty-nine point six acres. The surrounding area consists of residential and agricultural properties, along with West Kelly Park Road to the north and Round Lake Road to the west. The major development plan shows one hundred thirteen single-family lots with a minimum lot width of fifty-five feet. The proposed minimum, minimum living area is one thousand six hundred square feet. Access to the site is proposed off of West Kelly Park Road at the north, with four vehicular and pedestrian future access points being proposed. In addition, three future pedestrian connections are proposed, with one here, one here being at the west central portion of the development, and these two in the central part of the development. The applicant has provided nine point forty-eight acres of open space, where seven point seventy-three acre, acres are required. This open space includes a community pool, walking trails, and a playground. The major development plan is consistent with the master plan that was approved by city council on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The development review committee recommends approval of the Oak View major development plan, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the Oak View major development plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of the major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of the staff?
I do. What improvements are they gonna do on Kelly Park Road?
The applicant has proposed to provide turn lanes, left and, left and right turn lanes, at the entrance point on, uh, West Kelly Park Road.
Okay, and just down the road is Kelly Park Road and Round Lake Road intersection. Is that in the city of, um, Apopka?
No, it's just outside of the court, it's in the city.
Because that, that's a bad intersection, and that needs to be, something needs to be done to that intersection. They need to return some turn lanes in there, it's, it's in bad shape. And building this complex is gonna, or these, uh, houses are gonna increase to, I know you did a traffic study, but did they take that in count? The, uh, intersection there, or just city property?
Pam Richmond, who is our transport- Oops. Sorry. There we go. Pam Richmond, who's our transportation coordinator, she takes into account any different types of improvements and requirements, and, um, they do have transportation impact fees that can go towards that. However, because it's an Orange County intersection, we don't have any control over that. We can make our recommendations to Orange County, but in, in the long run, we can't do anything until Orange County says yes, uh, to, to doing anything at that, at that stage. However, we can control the entrance and features for the right-hand turn lane and the left-hand turn lane coming into the project itself. And then this is also gonna be, um, part of some of the improvements, we're gonna be, we're actually in the process of extending our water and sewer lines, um, all the way to Round Lake, so it's, it, it, it will be, you know, probably a consideration for, for improvements for the intersection, but at this stage, this, this particular development is not affected enough to warrant any other improvements.
I understand that, and I agree with that, but there's gonna be more, more and more subdivisions coming in there.
Correct.
So, are we gonna, are we gonna be proactive, or are we just gonna wait till it's a problem?
Well, we're continually proactive, that's why we have transportation studies that, uh, that take into account the accumulative effect of the, on the roads. At once, at a particular stage, and I couldn't tell you, you know, how many units it would take and how many, how much, how many trips from each of the transportation, um, uh, issues that come up for each of the different developments, will be at that stage when that will, uh, when those improvements would have to, uh, take effect. But that's something that, uh, that Pam takes into account for each of these projects.
And Pam's not here, or not?
She is not here, but she couldn't tell you that either, because each, each time we do a transportation study, they tell her the effects on the roadway itself, the roadway system. And it hasn't gotten to that, that, that timeline where a traffic signal or a, um, any other turn lanes or anything are, um, are, are required at that, at that particular intersection, which is quite a ways going to the west.
I mean, because this is in terrible shape, I mean, it's, it's, it needs repair.
Oh, yeah, that's true, but again, it, it, it's, it's far enough to the west that it wouldn't, this, this goes towards that, but it's not gonna trigger it.
Has there been any communication with Orange County about that?
Pam continually talks with them about Kelly Park Road and all the intersections going-
And she can't, and she can't be here to tell me what company progress or what Orange County said about it?
I can, I can have her come and come to the next meeting to discuss that, but that, this, this does not trigger anything for that.
I'm sorry?
This does not trigger anything for that. You, you are free to give her a call if you wanted to, though. You know, she's up in my office.
We'd like her to come next time, yeah, we'd like to, yeah. Because there's a lot of bad, there's a lot of roads that are, that are substandard.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's a continual thing, especially with all the development that we've got coming.
Let me ask you about Rogers Road. What, what's, what's, I understand the city has to pay for that now, has to be?
I couldn't, I don't know the impact on that.
I mean, there's three major developments coming off Rogers Road, and it's, it's a terrible substandard road there. I don't know how, and now the builders are gone, developers are gone, and we're stuck with a bad road. I know you're gonna say it's Orange County's road, but-
Give, give Pam a call.
I'm sorry?
Give Pam a call.
I'm talking to you right now.
But I don't have the answers. I mean, you could, you could talk like this for the next two hours, and I wouldn't have an answer for you.
I'm trying to avoid these bad roads in that area. I mean, it's all county roads that weren't designed for, uh, residential roads.
Yeah, Rogers Road was done in that last development on the northeast corner, I don't even remember what it's, what that one's called. That was done just when I got back here, about five years, five, five and a half years ago. And that was one of my, my questions, because I, I took a drive-out on that also, and it was horrendous. I thought, where am I going? I'm, I felt like I was out in the country with that road. And then when I got to the main development, yeah, the entrance is great, and the roads inside are wonderful, but it's that, it's that road getting to it was terrible.
They got three large subdivisions there, the developers are gone, and we're stuck with a bad road.
Yep, and the back entrance for emergency purposes for the other subdivision in the northwest. So, yeah, it, it, she, she does have, um, I believe there is a, a program that's, uh, that they're looking at for fixing Rogers Road.
Yeah, and, yeah, and the city-
But I couldn't, but I couldn't tell you when and how and who's paying for it.
The city is having to pay for it, or the county is not paying, both of them, we could have had the developers pay for it.
Should have.
Because when I was talking to that developer, we had the problem with, with Diamond Drive, you knew where Diamond Drive was?
I know exactly about Diamond Drive, and that, that got actually solved about three months before everybody started whining, whining and complaining about it. We actually already nixed it out of the pro, out of that development, and everybody kept talking about it, but we weren't affecting it at all, and we were not gonna connect to it. The developer agreed not to connect to it, but it kept getting brought up.
Yeah, but, well, when, when I, when I talked to the developer here, he, he agreed to fix, to bring Diamond Road up to standard, he agreed to it.
If, if, the people on Diamond Road would have wanted that to cut through.
Right, to get access to it, yeah.
But they didn't, so that got next. That was part of that requirement.
But my point is, we can get the developers to help fix these roads, they're coming in with all these houses, I mean, something's gotta be done with these roads.
There's, there's a lot of it that will be, but, um, Kelly Park will be going to a four-lane road eventually.
Right.
And that's when that'll get fixed.
But that's gonna be too late, you know that.
Not necessarily.
And like Golden Gem Road?
We didn't expect to have water and sewer put in either by this time.
And Golden Gem Road, it's-
Golden Gem is part of another development that, uh, there's, there's two hundred and two acres, part of the DRI that's being sold. They will be, uh, improving Golden Gem Road.
Just in front of their subdivision, I said.
It's, they, they border it, um, along about, uh, about a little over a third of that road.
Yeah.
But we can't make them pave, pave it all the way to, uh, to Poncan either.
Anyway, okay.
Okay, uh, further questions of staff? And the applicant is just available for questions, or do you have a presentation? Okay, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. We will close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Find the Oak View major development plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and is the-
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is the major development plan, buildings within Apopka four-two-nine. Owner is Cypress Business Park LLC. Applicant is Kenley Horn Associates, care of Jason A. Lewis. Location is south of US four forty-one, west of Apopka Airport, and we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Subject property is located southwest of US four forty-one and west of the Apopka Airport. It is the site of the Rubrite PUD. You've also seen this before, is the Apopka four twenty-nine major development plan that came through here last summer. Major development plan details the development of infrastructure servicing three warehouse buildings totaling two million five hundred and one thousand two hundred square feet on two hundred and forty-three point four-four acres. Buildings will be accessed via Apopka Logistics Parkway. Per the comprehensive plan, twenty percent of the parking spaces will be constructed of pervious materials. Stormwater is proposed to discharge in five ponds that are located throughout the site. And the development review committee recommends approval, and staff recommends approval, and the applicant is here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant? Then we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the buildings within Apopka four twenty-nine major development plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Our next item is the major development plan, Magnolia Terrace. Owners are Marion Wade Harper Life Estate, Kathleen Harper Life Estate, Harold Wayne Thomas, Melody Lynn Thomas, Mary Kathleen Hopper, Douglas Matthews Trust, Anita Matthews Trust, George A. Thomas, Sandra K. Thomas, Venus Stapler, Gail Marie Stapler, Kenneth W. Davidson, and Natalie W. Davidson. Applicant is Appian Engineering LLC. Location is east of South Benyon Road and south of Willett Avenue. And we have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager, once again, for the record. The major development plan submitted requests approval for a three-hundred-unit residential subdivision consisting of a hundred and twenty-four single-family detached units on a hundred and seventy-six townhome units developed in two phases. Property is located south of Benyon Road and south of Willett Avenue in approximately ninety-five point zero-nine acres in size and is zoned PUD via an approved PUD master plan approved by the city council on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. All elements of the major development plan are consistent with the approved PUD master plan. Consistent with the approved PUD master plan, the single-family lots range in size from sixty feet in width to ninety-two point five feet in width. Lots range in size from seventy-five hundred square feet to eleven thousand four hundred twenty-nine square feet in area. Minimum living area of eighteen hundred square feet is provided for the single-family homes and thirteen hundred square feet for the townhomes, which is consistent with the master plan. Access to the site is proposed via full access on Benyon Road. Right, left turn lanes are provided leading into the site on Benyon Road as well. Turned streets are dedicated to the public. The development review committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion this